We'll call the meeting to order and report us with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-40-80E, South Carolina Code of 1987 as amended. All the meeting in the immediate area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have the prayer by Mr. Govan and Mr. Jeffers if you'll lead us in the pledge.
Father, it is again that we come asking for your mercy and your grace. We ask for your direction as you help us to deliberate on issues relative to this school district. We ask God if you will allow us to make decisions that are pleasing to your sight and in the best interest of our children. We ask this, and as we leave, we ask God if you will give us traveling mercies, safe traveling mercies, as we return back to our respective homes. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take the motion to approve the agenda.
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And we have our general discussion items. Dr. Ferguson, I will turn this one over to you then.
All right. Well, good afternoon, everyone. We are going to talk through some exciting capital projects tonight. And so how we're going to do that is Mr. Schuler is going to walk us through what has been completed in some of the projects. And then Joel is going to walk us through some ideas about what our long-term future could look like in Darlington County. We've asked Joel to go back and look at a few projects that were in the Long Range Plan and reimagine some of those, one of which is Mayo and where Mayo should be. And so Joel's got some preliminary ideas around how we could work through the Mayo project and then also around St. John's and what the future at St. John's could look like potentially. But before we jump into the longer-term vision, I want to give Mr. Schuler the opportunity to come up and talk through some of the projects that we have completed over the last year and how we've been trying to be good stewards of that money and improve our facilities.
Good afternoon. I'm going to kind of start off, we kind of did it in divisions, so I'm going to start off with the elementary division and kind of speak to you upon like what we completed this year. You guys kept me like super busy. This has been nonstop. But Brockington Elementary had classroom renovation due to a movement in our exceptional needs, self-contained classroom. They also received some food service equipment. And obviously, we kind of talked about the rekeying project and the safety upgrade for Brockington Elementary. For Bay Road, they also, and all of the elementary schools and all of the middle schools have received the rekeying project. So all of them are completed now. All that's left is the high schools.
Rekeying is what you're saying?
Rekeying.
Rekeying. I was like, what is rekeying?
I'm sorry.
Rekeying. I got it.
Mr. Schuler, you've got to use your teacher voice.
I'm sorry. Do I need the microphone? For Carolina Elementary, we did some canopy repairs and some drainage. They also received some food service equipment. They received a new mobile in which we did some sound and some radio replacements and also the school safety upgrade with the rekeying project. JL Kane was also in that number with the rekeying project, as well as Lamar Spalding Elementary, and those are newer facilities. So you probably won't see a whole lot of capital needs there just because they are newer facilities. North Hartsfield just completed a fencing project where the fencing was upgraded, as well as there were some parking lot upgrades and they needed some additional parking for the movement of their kindergarten class and as well as after-school events. Paint Elementary received some food service equipment, as well as some safety, school safety upgrades with the rekeying project, as well as South Side Early Childhood Center. We replaced some radios, as well as the rekeying project. Thornwell Elementary was part of the safety upgrade. They received some door access, some additional cameras, as well as the rekeying project. And that is the elementary division. We spent a little over $1 million in that division.
Mr. Schuler, before you move on from that. So I'm trying to think back. I don't remember seeing the, like, the food service upgrades on any of the capital. Is that something that came up? Where'd those come from?
Well, I could, so food service is a separate fund. It's funded by USDA.
I got you.
And when we have fund balance funds in food service, we have to spend them or send them back.
Okay.
And so the food service, this is a list of all capital, so those did not come out of our bond or capital money. They came out of the food service fund balance.
That's why we didn't see that.
We had a, we're still doing some renovations. So we've done some new serving lines. They can't do, like, building walls and that kind of thing, but we can spruce up the outside and we can replace all the equipment that needs to be replaced.
And as we were going through, as we were touring at the beginning of the school year, a lot of the food service people were talking about the upgrades that had been done and they were pleased, they were pleased with some kind of the upgrade.
Well, that makes sense.
The serving line.
The source of the funds.
Equipment, stuff in that.
Yeah, that's why we had not seen those. Okay.
Mr. Schuler, talking about rekeying, as we, as she alluded to when we were visiting schools, there was concern about some of the school key, keys were not working on the doors. Have they resolved that problem now?
Yes, they have. And they are still on contract, so they have been on-call. Those are a lot of doors, a lot of hardware replacement, so they have been very responsive on rectifying those situations.
Because I saw a young lady and a old man that's on the contract.
Yes, sir.
He said they were trying to go back and, you know.
Yeah, the summer was short and we made it happen, but that's one of the things that I don't think we account for, right? The summer is just not the summer anymore. It's a, you know, problem.
Are we done with all our rekeying now?
With elementary and middle. So we still have the high schools to do.
Was that a, and you, I apologize, was that a three-year, were we funding that over three?
I think two.
So a portion of that was a security grant that we, the million-dollar grant that we received, and then the other portion that we will fund. So it was a two-year project, and I think when I came in, I think we were behind, so we officially started last year, so we'll finish up this year. We're having conversations in reference to doing the smaller high schools, Lamar High School and Mayo High School, possibly during the breaks, but we have to have some conversations with the principals because, again, logistically, as far as giving those keys out and making sure everything's okay, we need to make certain that we don't cause any interruptions. So I'm going to kind of defer to them on what do they prefer, right? I mean, I want to get it done, but obviously I don't want to cause any hindrance either.
And originally, that project was put on our capital list with a much higher price tag than it ended up being. We got $1,360,000 in safety grant, and right now we've spent 1.1 million on the rekeying project. So we may have a little bit of expenditure, but nothing like what there was originally projected.
From the middle school side of things, they received some, both Darlington Middle School and Hartsfield Middle School received some food service equipment. And with the school and safety rekeying project, they received those upgrades, as well as Spalding and Middle. And that division was about $350,000 that we spent.
Let me see.
In the high school division, we're looking at Darlington High School turf was completed. They received some food service equipment, cafeteria renovation, but the entry was relocated for flow and traffic during lunch. There were some concrete sidewalks that was reworked, and we was having some issues. And we're also looking at some ADA compliance as well. They received their esports stadium furniture. Also, we completed the Blue Street Sports Complex, which was a joint venture with the city.
Is that Blue Street, was that our, the 3.4, was that our total week?
That is our.
That was our total contribution?
Yes. They had a $6 million grant, and they sent us the $6 million, so the entire project was 9.4. That included the reworking of the road, which wasn't in the original.
And the tennis courts.
And the tennis courts. That wasn't in the original, yeah.
They're beautiful.
All right. Now the Hartsfield High, obviously, we completed their turf field in Kellytown and the practice field at their school location. Within that turf field project, there were some drainage issues in Kellytown that we took care of as well. Hartsfield High also received a stadium, esports stadium, food service equipment, restroom renovations. I think you guys remember that, and that was pretty much going in. And a number of restrooms throughout their facility, they needed some upgrading and partitions and just some rejuvenation, as I would say. And also softball, press box flooring and electrical was upgraded at Hartsfield High Lamar High School, we had Lamar softball bathroom renovations. That building was completed. We are in the punch list for our Lamar High School turf field and locker room upgrade. Also, we resurfaced the track for Lamar High School. For Mayo High School, we had security equipment upgraded. We had some door access and some additional cameras, also a canopy repair, some food service equipment, and some school safety upgrades. Yes?
I'm going to go back to Hartsfield High for a second.
Yes, sir.
Where are we with the track?
Let's go more asking.
Where are we with the track?
Where are you going to put it?
I think we're going to have some conversations. I think that would be a decision.
Or Joel's, perhaps?
Yes. For the facilities update, I think that we're going to have some conversations in reference to that.
Do we still have the line item in our, is the line item still there? Because we've had the allocation of funds there in that line item for a while. Is that line item still there?
I will decide. I mean, I don't have any line items. We got a total amount of money that we have available.
When it was presented to us, it was presented to us as a line item?
Yeah. I mean, it's still on the list. It's still on the list. Right now, these things have all been done, and then we have a report with what funds we have left.
All right. And rounding up, this high school division was Darlington County Institute of Technology Greenhouse that we proposed. Our high school division with the large projects, we spent about $10 million. Overall, district-wide, we had some elevator upgrades for Hartsfield High, Thornwell, and Mayo High School. Obviously, we have the technology refreshed yearly. That's with HPs as well. Our students and teachers have MacBooks, where many of our clerical finance have HPs. There were some additional bus cameras. We needed some sale dollars for Paint Elementary and Spalding Elementary, where we were not communicating with our agencies. And we found out so that we had to do an emergency PO for, for those sale dollars. Cornice blocks, the cornice project is near complete. Big shout-out to Renee. Phase two of Brunson Garden demolition was the baseball field and the football field that was left over, and that was demolished. Maintenance radio replacements and school safety upgrades project. So district-wide, we spent about $15 million. So I'll talk to you about like where we are now. Every year, the doctor, in the past, there's been budget meetings in which principals meet with superintendent, finance, CFO to establish budget capital requests. So we are working diligently on that. We've moved forward with upgrading 5K furniture. So that is a project that we're beginning to work on as well, and then Darlington High We are continuing to work on our capital planning processes. Last year was a blur. We were in transition as it relates to our maintenance department with leadership, so this year I think we are in a better space to complete that project, and that's one of Dr. Ferguson's goals. So we got to make it happen.
What's that maintenance account?
All right. The maintenance, the 521 account is our, like, small projects account. So when we are in desperate need plumbing-wise, HVAC and roofing, we use that 521 account. So we had some sidewalk replacement at Carolina, some fire alarm parts, as well as a roof repair at Carolina Elementary. North Hartsfield, we had a HVAC replacement, as well as Paint Elementary, and we did some emergency roof repairs there as well. Hartsfield Middle, we had a HVAC replacement. Spalding Middle, we had some repairs. We also had some plumbing issues where we replaced the lift station and also electrical football light pole that was damaged in the storm. Darlington High, we had a few emergencies. Obviously, we had to cancel school, so we had some drainage, some drain repairs, water line repairs. Obviously, we had a couple of heat pumps that we had to replace. We had to upgrade the lighting in Darlington High School. Sewer connection, sewer lift, obviously, there's some major issues there that we've carefully rectified. And then we had a three-ton mini slip for Darlington High School's gym. For Hartsfield High, we did a cafeteria heat pump and repaired some sports lighting as well. Lamar, we did a lift station and some roofing repairs. At Mayo, we had additional fencing. And district-wide, we did some summer painting, some freon, some herbicides, and maintenance shed.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Hartsfield Middle, with the HVAC, have they rectified the auditorium?
We haven't. So based on our cyber attack, we've lost control, so we are in conversations with the company now and insurance. So we are, I guess it's two sides here, right? We have in conversations with the insurance to see if they are able to rectify with the current company that we have been using. And then we're having conversations with the company that we're using for the new school, that we're getting quotes on the newer facilities. So we have control over all of our facilities except the newer facilities, which is Bay Road, Lamar Spalding Elementary, JL Kane, this building, which was recently renovated, the Hartsfield Middle Auditorium, which we replaced that entire HVAC system and that control system is there as well, so.
Do we have a good plan? Are we working on a good three-to-five-year plan for HVACs and roofs? Do we know?
Yes. So we have inputted most of the data within our Brightly system. We have to update it, but a lot of that fell short in the transition with leadership.
Yeah, I know, yeah. So, but we're working on that. We're going to have that.
Mr. Schuler, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were able to make pretty large investments in HVAC during ESSR, because that was an allowable expense of ESSR funds. And then we are looking for a roof consultant to come in and give us, is that right? Am I remembering that right?
Yes, we're going to phase it, looking at our oldest buildings. I think it's North Hartsfield, and I think I have it written down here, North Hartsfield, Mayo, Paint Elementary, and Carolina and Thornwell.
Should there not be a, for lack of a better word, I guess, a recycling, if you will, plan, so as same as we do with band uniforms, so to speak, or, you know, football athletics, where we put HVAC on a cycle, say five years, eight years, whatever the case may be?
Yes, sir. So we're working on that. So the data is there, we just have to get all of it in to begin that process. But we did a lot of upgrading during COVID with the ESSR funds.
We also, we also had funds prior to COVID and ESSR funds, there was an Abbeville fund, and there were $2 to $3 million in funds that we used, and they were primarily used for elementary HVAC systems. So that was a year or two years before COVID hit, so they're not very old either. We replaced a lot of HVACs.
I guess my concern is, if we did all this new, right at the, with ESSR.
One time.
They're going to all fall off.
One time.
And we may not have the money, I mean, so we need to just monitor that really carefully so as to, I would, we may want to replace something a year earlier than needed, so that, yes, so to kind of.
So then I'll get it at the same time. And we know it's coming, right? So like, when we're looking at three to five years for our capital plan, those are already plugged in. Like, we know we're going to have to replace HVAC units and fix roofs so that we don't get kind of surprised.
Is that what you're?
The 521 funds that Schuler just went through, if you recall, when Dr. Timms was here, when I first got here, we put in a plan where we transferred money to a vehicle maintenance account and to this maintenance account. And so it has some surplus in it, and that's what it's for, is for small, you know, one or two HVACs here.
What's the cost limit? I mean, is there something that?
Where it doesn't have to be in capital.
Correct.
It's just a, instead of doing a bunch of budget change orders, we have this fund, and his team knows that if a $20,000, you know, item pops up, they can put in a request to use the 521 account and the money's there.
But there's not a dollar amount that it?
And it's basically, it was general fund money.
So do we continue to put money in that or no? We did. So it's a budget line item? Okay.
So you were saying that you're inputting data. Can you just, I mean, I guess.
So within the Brightly system, it's supposed to be able to forecast and give you reports on information as far as capital planning is concerned? But we got to get all that information and data inputted in so we can be able to do it. So there's another segment as well. So we've had conversations about the software side of it, and the initial conversation was this, like, large price, and we're asking for this upgrade. And so we didn't move on it because right now we're putting in data, so.
Why don't I, why you haven't finished, because you hadn't done too much, so I don't know why you hadn't got that yet. I said, I don't know why you haven't finished it yet, because it doesn't look like you've done it much, so.
Yes, ma'am.
But that is the point of that system, is what you're, is what we're talking about, right? Like, it's going to help you forecast those.
It's kind of like, I was going to say, preventive maintenance.
That's what I thought. I mean, just.
A few years ago, we did a plan like this, it was supposed to be input there. I don't know if it's switched over personnel and all, sometimes it gets lost and shuffled, but something like this was done several years ago.
Yeah, two years ago, we switched systems. So we went from what was TMA, our work order system, to Brightly. So I think that could have been transferred.
I know, like a lot of things, we start something and it seems like it gets lost and shuffled somewhere down the road. I don't know why it does and doesn't, but.
And just a tag on the roofs and the HVAC. A few years back, we went through a painting schedule, and we put out a painting schedule. Are we still following through on that?
So we did not do any painting this summer, so we're going to put something out for the breaks. Part of that was because we had a number of projects all going this summer with the rekeying.
It's up there. It's a line item up there.
Yeah, we did, yeah, that was this past year, so we would have paid for it. Last summer.
Oh, that was last summer's business.
Because that, for a period of time, that was, it was a big problem. And then we thought we'd have a solution to it by getting this painting on a schedule, but I would hate to see us fall off.
This is the first summer we haven't painted, and it was with the new school and moving, and it was all.
And there have been conversations based upon when I walked in, on having a true system versus what I perceived as like a hodgepodge. And I was the principal then, right? So it was just pretty much a system where, what do you want painted? And I think.
That's, Warren, you remember. I mean, we spent.
And I think we need something more systematic, whether it's like classrooms one summer, the halls. So we've had conversations with principals in reference to that, so.
But you're saying that you already came up with that at some point?
I.
Yeah, he was the HVAC replacements, all of it done at one time.
They had started utilizing a schedule. That was.
Maybe it was in that other system or whatever.
As far as painting was concerned?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't walk into that.
I haven't seen that either.
I don't, I don't remember.
It was when Mr. Johnson was here, because he was part of it. I mean, he was the one that kind of came up with the schedule. So you would have been here.
Well, they did systematic. I mean, like Mr. Schuler said, they went around and asked, you know, look, and to see what needed to be, but it wasn't a full-blown plan. It was every year we're going to do.
Well, that was our impression, was that they were, they were getting a, Mr. Johnson was getting a schedule to, so that we kept on top of it and it stopped being the hodgepodge.
And from a technical side, I guess it was a schedule. I don't know how systematic it worked, right? So if we say every summer, and it was pretty much to the principals, what do they want painted, right? And I think we got to work harder on creating a true system to make sure, like, your building is covered versus I want this base, this base, and it's no system for the building, right?
Yeah, I bring it up.
Any questions?
Renee, like, and one reason to, I wanted us to kind of start with this is, to lean, we are doing a lot, right? There are a lot of projects that have happened, and they are working through those. The last piece that we kind of talk about in that is, we are now finished with Black Creek Elementary Two, and I have. Creek Elementary Two, and I have to be careful because I want to call it Bay Creek, because I want to put Bay Road and Black Creek together.
Because I keep saying that.
And Renee keeps reinforcing it for me.
I know.
So, but that.
Your machine is timed out.
My machine is timed out. But, you know, we also have the, the final spreadsheet on, on that project too. And Renee will talk us through the, the finances on Black Creek.
For the old books.
Thank you, Mr. Schuler.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Schuler.
I'm not a Mac person, all right, I can look at mine then.
I'm not a Mac person, I swear to you, that's when I bought my.
I'm an HP person, I'm not a.
No, we can talk about them.
Okay, so, this is, this is a recap of the Black Creek Elementary project. I did the years, oh, I'm sorry, I got to have my computer, so. I put it by years, so I've got it up there, of what we, what we did. So we started out with fund balance money of 19.29 billion dollars. We did a transfer of $10 million more in fund balance money, and the only thing that we purchased that first year was the land, $1.6 billion. So then you go to the next column, the 23, 24 year, we earned interest, so the top part is the revenues, and then the bottom part is our expenditures. So we ended up, the entire project is at 44 million, 560,000, 564 dollars, and of that amount, 10 million is coming from our bond funds. The rest was all come, came from fund balance monies, which is a good thing. Down at the bottom, you can see the breakdown in expenditures, Edcons GMP, their guaranteed maximum price was a 29,826 in the far right column, and a 9.5 for the site work, and they came in exactly as they predicted. Their amounts included the technology playground, the building, and the site work, and their management fees, so that bottom section, the 39.397 was their part, the furniture and fixtures, moving services, and we have to pay builder's risk insurance down at the bottom, that all came out, district funds, the land surveys, and then architect fees. So the entire project, we, we had some outstanding balances, but that's in that last column, about 1.3 million left to be paid, but I feel sure I'll begin to invoice soon. And some of that's the furniture invoices, and we actually checked on that today to make sure that we have all those in that are due. But the entire project ended up at 44.5.
So what is the other five million?
So we've got, the land was 1.6.
All right, that 39 does not include those top numbers.
The 39, the 39 was guaranteed maximum price, that's what they gave us, and I just was tying it back.
Yeah, 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 I see now, I got it.
So that is where we are currently with the new school being completed and the projects that have been completed over the last year. And now, if Joel will come and kind of walk us through some ideas of where we could go long term, I'll be next, and I'm going to switch the computer back over to his PowerPoint.
One, before Joel starts, one, one quick, Mr. Schuler, could you, could you have that scanned and sent to us, that, the document that you colored, just in an email to us as, so we can have access to it, just for our records? Thank you.
Well, again, well, thank you for being here, and this is just a little quick overview. I'm not going to, Mr. Schuler went over this very well, but you know, safety and security, the door hardware, the, the bottom line is, the district has been, you've been very good stewards of your schools, by looking at everything, spending money where you need to for security, kitchen upgrades, athletic field improvements with the new turf fields, also ongoing projects such as ADA access renovations at Darlington High School, you know, the mechanical roof maintenance replacement has been ongoing. I think that Mr. Schuler's in the process of doing roof studies, and then with that, as you all mentioned, phased construction on the roofs. And then we're also looking at the Bay Road Elementary School project and, and moving forward with it. We now have the topographic survey, so we're starting to get those layouts also. You know, if we look at long-term vision, so those, those projects Mr. Schuler referred to are going on now, and, and are just, again, ongoing day in, day out, but we look at long-term vision, we discussed before about Hartsfield High School, we're also thinking about Mayo High School, I mean, you know, consistently one of the highest performing high schools in the state of South Carolina, that's, that's just, that's a true feather in your hat. Spaulding Middle School, we need to decide exactly how Spaulding is going to work, we want to maintain, you know, a vision there for Spaulding, District Office, you know, how to, you know, some possibilities there of, of what we do with the District Office, possibly moving this to St. John's, enough room there, so that now you can consolidate all of your different programs, et cetera, there, and then ongoing district-wide maintenance and improvements. You know, we talked about First Hartsfield High School, and will it fit with Kellytown Stadium? We've looked at this, we've studied, and, and yes, it will fit, there's some things that we're going to have to do, such as, we think about storm drainage, and how do we, how do we handle that? We would have to do, what we refer to as underground storage for water there with that, and basically put it in big, big pipes up underneath parking areas, et cetera. The footprint we have here, we're looking at roughly 1,300 students, well, we know right now you have roughly 11, but that's kind of what that particular footprint will house. Also, it has two gymnasiums on this, so, and interior type courtyard, that would be a secure courtyard, so that your students will have somewhere to, you know, congregate, really just an extension of the educational space, will be in those outdoor areas, where your art rooms, cafeteria, and all, and all filled out on that quarter, courtyard area. Football stadium, we talked earlier, you had mentioned the track, by taking the bleachers, moving those out, that gives us enough room to put that track in there. We would also have to look at either the, possibly both, looking at the fieldhouse and then also the toilets, and moving those out also to accommodate this, when we consider a 400 meter track. Practice areas, you know, we would love to have one more practice field for this, but honestly, it will work with, especially with the turf, when you look at the practice fields, stadium there, and then also another practice field down at the bottom, taking a softball field, moving it over here along with tennis, baseball field was already there, baseball, football, we've already had covered. So anyway, so those are some of the things that, that we look at with Hartsfield High School.
Yes, sir. And I'm thinking about the public when I read, when I say this. So we had a group of people who raised, I can't remember what it was, six million, whatever it was, to do that fieldhouse. Would that fieldhouse not remain, or would you take? You see what I'm saying?
Yes, so we haven't studied that enough, you know, Mr. Govan, but if we leave the fieldhouse where it is, it just pushes the, the field, I want to say towards the north, playing north there, that playing, of the, towards that practice field, so.
Well, I'm assuming then you're talking about demolishing the old school over there.
Correct. Yes, because the old school will be located in the, kind of the bottom right, where the softball field is and the practice field, so in that area is where the, where the school currently is located.
Joel, are there other high school sports that potentially could come to Hartsfield High School that we don't currently participate in?
Yes. We're seeing, when we talk about field play, we're seeing, all, all of our fields are being taxed, number one, when you, football, soccer, those two, and, and especially when you consider your JV teams and in some cases B teams. So on the natural turf field, at the end of football season, you've got bear spots. When you get your boys and girls playing soccer, JV and varsity, at the end of soccer season, they're playing on mud. So that's why your turf, and that's why so many people are going to turf, it's just a matter of safety.
Sure.
So, so anyway, that's a, a good thing to do, that way your students have good footing.
I think you're saying on a regular field, you have bear spots? Yeah, yeah, but not on turf, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so now what we're seeing is a big push for lacrosse. Again, that's boys and girls lacrosse. Another thing that we're seeing in some of the larger schools is field hockey, and usually that's the girls' field hockey, which helps with Title IX, when we look at, at, at boy sports, football, et cetera. So the, the field hockey is something that is starting to migrate into the state, and we think it's going to catch on also.
But is that, that's played on the football state, on the football field?
Yeah, so, so with the, with, with the different fields, you have an opportunity, especially with a smaller venue, to move some of those smaller, you know, less traffic, et cetera. When I say traffic, I'm referring to your, your patrons that are going to be watching, you may want to put them on a different field, so that you're not putting them in a huge stadium that just feels empty.
But there's not a, there's not a need, I mean, that, the sports that you're talking about that aren't potentially there that might come, or there's not a different field that we would need, or different space that we would need for that sport?
No, all of those, all of those sports, yeah. Now soccer, soccer wants huge fields, but we just, we just, in the States, we just do not do that. If you go to Europe, you look at those fields, and they're huge.
Okay. I was just making sure, like, we're not using ours, every little inch of our space, and then like, oh, we have a new sport, we want it to come, and we don't even have five feet to put it in.
It would be nice to have four practice fields. I'm sorry, four fields, three for practice, and, and then one could also be utilized for smaller venue play. But that, that would be nice, but we have many, many high schools across the state of South Carolina that just have three fields.
Is that parking space large enough to accommodate a full stadium?
Yeah, so if you look at the park, and you've also, you've got it out in front of the school, kind of top right, and then also we have like student parking, that would be in the, in the middle, and it's a pretty good bit of park. I don't, do not have the exact numbers, I did it one time, I don't remember them, but anyways.
So is there enough land there for everything? Do we have to purchase any additional land?
There's enough land there. I mean, would it be nice to have a little more land? Sure. But, but you can go with what we have shown here, and everything will fill on the Kellytown property.
I mean, we in the people's backyards right there, down here at the baseball field, they can look out their windows and watch the baseball game.
Isn't that already there?
That's already there.
That's already there.
The baseball field's already there.
That's already there now. Baseball field's out, they're going to be watching baseball.
Yeah, that's what they're getting predated for that.
The land on the back, God's secrets on that.
That's the, yeah, that's the land that we.
So, Joel, if I remember correctly, it would be nice to have more land and property, it would assist with drainage, but it's not a requirement to.
Right. If, if we had more land rather than doing underground detention for stolen water, then we could do it on surface in ponds, and that would be a lot less expensive than, than putting it underground.
None of that land is wetlands?
Uh, I think, so immediately up, to upper left.
That is, that's not being.
Bleeds out, it's wet ones, so we'd have to be careful with that.
That wouldn't help us any in that way.
That would not help you.
So when you talk about doing all of that, Joel, you're parking, but also doing another gym?
It would be two gyms in, in there, next to that student parking that's down in front, immediately up the sheet is where your two gymnasiums would be, and then all your athletic locker rooms, B locker Rooms, et cetera.
So they're side by side too there?
Side by side.
So are you looking at the state of the art gym as you did?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you let showcase?
Same capacity for seating.
Right. And probably.
Just one of practice and one, again, and one way a little bigger.
Yeah, one would be more practice, the other would be competition.
As far as seating accommodations.
Right. And, and we would look at that a little bit more. I think we've got a little bit more seating in the layout than we've got here, and again, this is all very diagrammatic, and we've got to go through programming, and we've got to talk, find out exactly what your needs are here, but we do have two gymnasiums in there, along with our locker rooms. And then we would design core facilities, your cafeterias, kitchens, your, your media center, all that, we, we're thinking we would design that for 1,500 students, and that gives you plenty of growth in the future. And if we, you know, again, we'll sit down with you, we'll do some planning, if we need to be a little bit bigger than that, we feel like we can accommodate and date that, again, on this site.
And that's two stories? Three? Two or three? Ten stories, is it two stories?
Two stories, yes, that is two stories.
And it's that, we, we would do that around 1,500 student population? And they're what right now?
Eleven.
Yeah.
So I guess, Joel, the big animal in the room here is cost.
Right.
Well, I think he's going to get to that.
Before we get to cost, I ask, what, what other about the site? Are we sure we can accommodate traffic through that area?
So the answer to that is, we feel pretty comfortable, we actually, and, and this goes back to the estimate, in the estimate, we put money in there for off-site roadway improvements.
Because there is a curve in the road right there, that's a little bit.
I mean, it's causing traffic slow.
That's right.
They'll come up stadium, they come down, quad.
Correct, that's right. And so when you go out, that, that's kind of what we're looking at, going out to one.
Well, my other concern is, are we boxing ourselves into another landlocked situation?
You mean like what, what you have right now in Hartsfield, for the high school?
I mean, it's already residential, so are you? And the growth of Hartsfield to some degree is in that area, are you not lock, landlocking? You will be back into the same situation that you're in now with Hartsfield High as it is.
No, I think it's different, because our problem with Hartsfield High as it exists right now is the safety nightmare of having 13 buildings on a, on a piece of property with exterior, you've got, you've got the travel exterior between each building. It's not the fact that we're landlocked, we probably could rebuild right there if we had to.
If you had to, you could do that.
I mean, but it, it's more of a safety reason for Hartsfield High right now.
Well, I think personally, it's going to be a safety issue the way you look at it, but as far as facilities, I just don't see, in my mind, if you, if you're not going to get that property behind you, which is probably a muted issue, I still think at the end of the day, you're going to be landlocked.
Do you have an alternative idea?
No, I don't, but I just hope, unless you can find some land.
That's getting harder and harder to do in Hartsfield.
They don't like, they don't have access, that's what that means, they don't have access.
Is there a brand up there, or eat, on either side of either practice field for minimal parking?
There, there could be.
Maybe, yeah, I mean, so that's the only thing I'm thinking too, is like, so we fit it all into this small little area, but does it really, does it make sense? Like, if you're going to your practice at that practice field up there. Like, if you're going to your practice at that practice field up there, are you really parking over here on Clyde Road and walking? You know what I'm saying, like, the?
So if you look, if, the bus drive that comes all the way around, and then between the stadium and the school, you've got a parking area there also.
So that, that's parking, like teacher parking or something?
Teacher parking, is what we would suspect that being.
And what's the size of this property again? About 50 acres? It's around 40 or 50 acres, I was wondering. It's not small.
No, it's, it's not. Ideally on a new school site, we would say, hey, you know, we'd like to have 100 acres on a new high school site. But, but this is still not small, and I've got those numbers somewhere, and do not have them with me.
I mean, I almost be in favor, I mean, like, right now, they don't even, they don't have a practice, well, they have like a, just like out in the, they do have a practice field. Darlington didn't have a practice field. I mean, they're just like practicing out in the grass, right? I mean, could they get away with just, I mean, initially just one practice field? Or you think they, they would have to?
Well, the reality is more grading, everything.
There ain't a whole lot of expenses. Well, I'm just thinking like the turf, I'm thinking of using up space, is what I was thinking.
Sure.
To initially, so that, I don't know, you got a little, you got a little bit of extra time to figure out, does this work?
That's right.
You know, or do you need, would you rather use that space for parking?
This is all conceptual.
I know, I know it is, but it just is where, like, the things that they really need to include is that, is a second practice field a nice to have, or a?
Less.
Sure, necessity.
Really?
Yeah.
I think it's a necessity. Given the days, the way athletics are today, I think you're almost, I mean, if you're going to build schools today, you'd as well do that.
Well, I mean, if you did, if you had 100 acres, I can see, I can see where you're like, yeah, let's put another practice field. I'm just, I'm just trying to think of ways to make that space.
And you're thinking about Bams too. Don't forget about your Bams. Because your Bams are.
Talk about adding other athletic programs, you will need an extra practice field.
Yeah.
Just the area where West Hart School used to be is 40 acres.
Okay.
Based off our 12. So you may have 15, 50 acres.
Right.
With the football stadium and everything.
There's a hassle, I just do not remember the, the exact acreage.
I can't, all I can get through and pull up is West Hart School. That was from off our 2012 facility study, and it says, West Hart School was 40 acres.
I just, I was just pointing out that it's, you know, there's quite a bit of space there.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a tiny little plot like that.
Right, we're not trying to.
Yeah, but.
You've probably got 50 acres out there.
Yeah. But it just, I mean, once you get everything on there.
It, it looks like, it, it looks tight.
But there's a lot of stuff on that diagram.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a lot of bank for your buck in that space.
Yeah. Mike, but Bart said, the building itself is 250,000 square.
From a safety standpoint, obviously, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be transferring in and out between classes or buildings. What about from the main building into the stadium?
It's four.
You know how, you know how like in Darlington, it comes right out of the, the weight room?
Well, it looks like it does. Like, you would come out of like, that looks like something on this end, you know, how the sidewalk comes around?
That's, that's where the sidewalk kind of comes around, captures some of that. And so we, I mean.
Like, the locker rooms are over here probably with the gyms.
Your locker rooms and all, you would have access. And you also have the fieldhouse too, which you can utilize. But, but more study needs to go into this. Well, you know, we, we, we plopped down objects and said, will it fit? And we said, yeah, we can, we can get it all to fit on there. A lot more study would have to be done, and we'd have to look at, you know, we think we've got plenty of room for setbacks and all of that also.
Why don't you have your track there too?
Well, we currently can't, you know, we, we have no home track games.
Why not?
Because we can't have them.
We can't have any, of course, one can have no home track games.
And I think that's the thing to keep in perspective. We're at a crossroads here, because we got stuff that we need to do, and it's like, do we put the money in it somewhere else, or do we start working towards putting the money in here? But does that mean the track team goes without for however many years it takes to get this, money for this, and get this built and done, you know?
Well, I thought I read somewhere recently that, that the city of Hart School was going to invest some money in, in the present track.
They're resurfacing it, but it's not big enough.
But it probably feels like it'll be conducive to what we, to have a home track meet.
So we still won't, won't be able to have home track meets? If they resurface it?
I think the problem is the middle's not big enough for all the extra apparatus.
The track could go ahead and be done, right? You wouldn't have to wait to build everything else. You could go ahead and do the track.
You could.
Well, if you moved the stadium and moved the fieldhouse.
Yeah, but you gotta do it anyway. You could do that ahead, I'd be some.
Well, I mean, as far as the initial part of the construction could be, but you can't, you can't be driving up, going to a track meet, and you gotta, you're in the middle of a construction site. You know what I'm saying? Like, I.
Well, we would design around that. We would figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, you've got the, yeah, you have other space maybe.
We're not talking about building the school, I mean, we're talking about doing this kind of separate little project and then.
Well, the first two things we would, we would suggest would be, go on and get your track and also your softball field over here.
But again, tell me what's got to happen to redo that track?
So, so if you think about, right now, your bleachers are up against the field. You would move those out, and then, and then either, on one end, either would have to rethink the fieldhouse, or on the other end, would have to rethink the toilets, visitor toilets, Jeff.
Or that's the refreshment stand.
So.
It's the refreshment stand on one end.
Yeah, that's right.
But it's all, it's, it's the bathrooms too, right?
Yes, the bathrooms and the refreshment stand. Or some of the bathrooms, some of the, aren't some of the bathrooms still 100?
I'd say there's bathrooms up there.
Man, we kind of talked about this with Owen and I and Joel. You could stair step this and do kind of the athletic portion of it, and still get everything done, and then build the high school at a, at a stair step date like what Mr. Jeff was talking about.
So you could do all the stadium moving, fieldhouse one, and try, that would be kind of like the phase one, before you ever even start doing anything else.
Correct.
But I think to do that, again, to do that, you got to make the decision, like, this is what we're going to do. Like, we're going to put everything out there, right?
What's the, I mean, I mean, is the trend, I mean, obviously, I would, my presumption would be that the trend is that high schools now are complexes.
Yeah.
That, that you don't have the high school here, and then the football stadium is out here, and the.
That's right.
And the, it's, it's a complex.
I mean, I don't think anybody building a new high school is unlike building everything on site.
There are rare exceptions where that is true, but usually everything is on, on site.
And Hart School's the only school, I mean, Darlington's all stuff is all on site.
Now.
Yeah. L'Arches is all on site. So Hart School's is the only ones that we are spread out everywhere.
What is the land that's kind of gray-green on the bottom left? Just land we don't own?
So, so that's far left.
Private all.
Ah, well, okay.
I'm not sure.
Yeah. So that was a very interesting project. The next one's probably going to be just as interesting, or maybe more so, because this is a, a new way of thinking about what we could potentially do at Mayo. And what I would preface this with y'all is, it's not set in stone. Joel kind of came and, it kind of blew my mind when I first saw this, because I said, I never thought about that that way. So it's not saying it's how it has to look when it's done, it's just saying this is one way we could think about, it could look on that same site and upgrade the facilities at Mayo and, and keep the land there, because I was going to do this later, but Joel already mentioned it. If y'all did not see in the news, Mayo High School was named by.
U.S. News.
U.S. News as number six high school in the state of South Carolina, and we are number one in the Florence metro area. So Mayo consistently shows up as a top 10 school, and is number one this year in the Florence metro area. So I, I think that is a testament to, to the folks out there, and it just makes this presentation even more timely, I think.
Yeah. So, you know, some of the concerns right now, you know, you've got limited, a lack of parking. Well, yes, on the interior, so to say, of the site, you've got a lot of parking. But if I'm a visitor, and I drive up to the building, and I'm trying to find, number one, the entrance, number two, if I'm trying to find the administration, it is difficult. It is difficult, because the administration, of course, is at the intersection on, on the far right in, in a separate building. But then once you go into there and you check in, now how do I get to the rest of the building if I'm a visitor? And where do I go? And so without someone caretaking you, which almost has to be done, it's just difficult to, to move around. Again, no visible entry into the school. It's just really confusing. You have some, some of your facilities are aging, and you've got some security concerns. However, again, you do have the fencing, et cetera, that, that makes it secure, and that works. And then you're building connectivity, you're covering canopies, and, and some improvements are needed there. But the big thing, again, going back to, you know, where do you park, where does a visitor come to visit? So if we think about that, you've got a building, I'm going to walk around and then point real quick, but you've got this building right here, that was an, an old vocational type facility, and it actually has a lot of wood structure in it. And there's one classroom that is currently being used, and I don't think it's being used, Dr. Ferguson, this year. I don't believe that, that classroom, when we walked through it, Mr. Schuler did not look like that classroom is being used. So there's, that's all that is in that one building, is that one classroom. So what if, again, we expect you guys to react, but what if we were thinking about maybe a different location for the entry? In the bottom corner of the site, there's an, an old house that I think was used at one time for administration, but anyway. But what if we were to look at this and say, rather than on, on the top, on Chestnut, what if we would flip the school and bring that entry in down the road, maybe down on Allen Street? Come in and phase one, we would develop the parking areas, demo the building, you can see there the dotted lines that I was referring to. And then we come back in and we place an administration, the media center, and science building in this location. That gives you parking out in front, it gives you student drop-off. We still have the student parking on the right-hand side. And then, as a part of that, the next phase, we would remove the current science classroom and media center, because we would have it covered in this one building. All right, so that frees up some area on the site. We look down the road a little bit further, and again, this, we're, what we're showing is a, I mean, it could be, it could occur in 15 years, we're thinking it's probably going to be more of a 20 to 30-year type project. And then we could come back in, and we could, we could take the cafeteria at some point in time, take it down, and then rebuild that cafeteria and, and kitchen area, bringing the road in, the service drive in off of the upper side. You'll notice in the pink kind of in the, in the center top, purchase says available. There's some properties there that we feel that, you know, 15 years down the road, may, may be more valuable to you than they are the current owners, as people move, transient move, some folks pass away, et cetera. Those properties may come available. When they do, we would suggest you purchase those. And then what you have, you can then, now that you've got that entire block, what, what happens next? We have, we can take the old classroom building down, replace it, and then, again, you're 25, you're 30, whatever, come back in, even replace the gym, and now you can kind of see how the site develops over time and what could be done. And again, we, we have no, no, no real structures that we're proposing here, these are just, just little blobs. And that way, we, we now have tied pretty much the entire campus together, so that you're not walking outside, you're all enclosed in this. And then we still have future areas that you can put additional buildings on down the road. But again, we, we were just trying to think of how we could create that entry and that administration area. And rather than just having administration, what if we were going to make new science labs, new media along with that administration? So that's kind of where all of this started. And again, it may be, maybe we find that the student population grows here, and as it grows, then, you know, you kind of have a plan of long-term, how you can accomplish a, a lot of different things on the site.
Roll me back to what you, what you would do first.
So the first thing we would look at would be taking the, the admin, which is in this building right here, and also, move back over one more.
It's up in that.
Yeah. Demo this building.
Okay.
And, and so that's, that's the big one. But basically, everything that's in this science building.
Science media building.
Science media, comes down here.
It's a much smaller building. How are you fitting all of that?
It's two stories.
Ah, okay.
So that's, that's.
You want the interest to come in from Allen.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. So you'd come in from Allen Street into the parking area, and we would create a secure courtyard in here, so this would remain secure. Again, student parking over here, we would have to think about the student parking, because we won't, we've got to get into the courtyard in some kind of secure fashion.
So you're going to take down, there was an old white house.
There, there was a house right here in the corner.
You're going to take all of that.
That's correct.
All of that down.
That house has some deep brick patterns on it.
That house was there, but I was there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Both of those buildings are not used for anything that I'm aware of, except maybe storage. I mean, I don't think anybody.
Allen Street.
Like, same.
But you know, Allen Street might would be better, because Chestnut is a real busy street. It's way more busy than Allen Street is.
Oh, and like, that's where the, Allen Streets were all the car line and drop-off and stuff ends up happening anyway.
Right. And, and we think that this, this system would work, we would have to go P O T and talk about that some more, but we think that that, that traffic flow would work.
What about, as, as conceptual as it is, your, your point is that you could flip that school in the current footprint in, in stages to where they could continue to go to school there?
Correct. Correct. And take all of this asphalt that's in here, that kind of creates some security issues, take that out, and, and wouldn't show a development, really develop this courtyard, start to develop it for the students to use, and it would just be, again, an extension of the, the classroom, and now your students are able to utilize that in safe and secure manner for a lot of different things.
Yeah, because right now, people, I mean, people cut through there in the community.
Yeah.
They have to, they've had to do a bunch of things, well, they may be used to, they, I think they've done some things to try to stop it. But yeah, it's this huge area, and people would walk through one gate and out the other all the, I mean, that, at least it used to be that way.
We know that this building is new, right up next to the gymnasium there. And so, but again, at, at some point in time, does it stay? Sure, it could stay, we could take that gymnasium down. But, you know, maybe it does, maybe, maybe at some point in time it goes away, it just depends on what your needs are.
So are there things, if, if you back up just to the, like, first phase-ish, maybe keep going back a little further.
There.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. So are there things you can do? Because one of the problems with that school too is all of the, the separate building issues of the, you know, age of all these, all our schools have, all our high schools.
Correct.
You know, are there, are additional things you could do to sort of connect them?
When you're doing this, that, that's one thing.
I mean, I know you're going to do it over 20 years, which you could, you do it sooner?
Right, oh yes, oh yes, as a matter of fact, I think. Oh, yes, as a matter of fact, I think. Somewhere, oh, tell them to revise and, or improve the, the connected connectivity. You know, go back and look at those, look at those covered areas and create new covered areas that kind of start to make sense, but not spend a lot of money on those so that if you needed to tear those down in the future, then you're not losing a lot. So, you know, and we would have to develop that a little bit more, we'd have to think through that. But I still think there are a lot of opportunities to come back in and do that and just kind of rethink how we access Mayo High School.
And Joel, to just stress the point that Leanne made, that some of these phase approaches are because there are children on the campus. And so, that, to not prevent that from happening is why we have to work through that in stages.
And as soon as you advance this first phase, right, and then you remove those two buildings, the current admin and then the media science room, now that frees everything. And that's when you now have space to build a building, demolish another building. And both of you guys have done that numerous times and we saw it, but it just kind of, again, over time, leapfrog around the school. It's an idea.
And I appreciate, Joel, I have to say too, is because when I read the first facilities study, and it's not about me, I know that, but I saw shutting down Mayo and building a wing onto the Darlington High Campus. I just said, Joel, is there any other way we could think about that so that we keep Mayo where Mayo is and invest that same amount of money into the renovation of that building?
And that was also just an idea.
Right.
That was not, that was not a, a decision to do that, it was one of the ideas. And this is another alternative idea, and I like the way you guys are handling it.
But more important than that, it was a part of the land, it was a part of the court decision that brought us to where we are now as to why it would remain, why it remains open to stock. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I am not in favor of losing the Mayo identity. I mean, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna be, you know.
I think we are.
Be upfront. I mean, I think it has a historical identity, but it has also, since the early 90s, developed a very reputable new identity that I think that you want to maintain.
Sure.
Is there any historical significance to that building that, like, people are gonna?
Oh, yes, there's very.
I mean, like tearing, like tearing it down and?
Oh, no.
Well, I mean, that would be a hard one.
The ones he's talking about, the auxiliary though.
I'm talking about moving it all the way from.
No, no, no. I mean, I was like this.
That side is more sacred than any, any bigger building.
That's something like that main building.
That's what I'm saying, the location.
Location.
But I'm saying, is there any kind of relationship or significance of, like, would people not like to lose the actual building on Chestnut, like, the building itself? You know, like, like how they felt about Saint, like, losing it?
We're not, we're not losing anything near until we get way on down the road. And at that time, 30 years down the road, when that building, the main building, you know, replaced, gets replaced.
Y'all will be loving that, y'all. Well, I mean, why do you say, why do you, I mean, why that long down the road?
It may not be. And that's, and that's just, you know, that's a decision for the board. And we're just showing, you know, how, how we may be able to work with it over time.
Just so y'all know, that's 10 acres.
I think the, and I asked this question earlier, the element of the room is still gonna be the cost. And if, you know, if we figure out how we're gonna deal with the cost, it could be 20 years down the road, or it could be five years down the road. See what I'm saying? Depending on how much we wanna bite and how much we wanna talk to taxpayers about funding. Because that's gonna be the ultimate.
Not to hold you to, what, what would that initial phase, just reorienting and doing the administrative media science?
So what we're looking at, and, and again, we're putting bubbles down. We think that that initial bubble, I'm gonna back up, with the admin, media, and science wing there, there, Allen.
And demo of the old one.
Yeah, would, would be right at, yeah. So we'll be right at 40,000 square feet. And when we look at everything, we look at the, the bottom line, we're thinking it's gonna be right at about $25 million, and that includes roughly $2 million for contingency. But the, the demolition of the buildings, we've got on-site parking, utility, security, landscaping, we've got off-site civil, we think we, we may end up spending on some of these interchanges to widen those a little bit for, for bus and, and car traffic. We'd be spending some money there, so we've got some money in there for that. So anyway, there's, about 25 million is what that looks like.
When we first started this discussion, we listed Hartsfield High School, Mayo, Spalding, District Office, and then district-wide maintenance. Are those in order of need and priority?
So if we go to the next one, yeah, that's right, they're, they're, they're just in an order.
They are.
Mental, no, no real order.
No order, okay.
So mentally, well, what we think of is if we get our high schools fixed up first, then everybody in the district will ultimately go through those high schools, that high school system. If we do an elementary school first, you'll capture, you know, from kindergarten, then you've got six years in that elementary school. But then everybody focuses through the high school at some point in time. So it can be any order that you, you choose. So we just typically go with high schools.
And is part of the selling point for doing Mayo, the security issue like Hartsfield High?
It's a combination of just your facilities and security. But the big thing is, again, defining the school, defining the front entry, having somewhere for parents to park, or even, you know, guest speakers, whomever that may be, having, having a secure area that they could go through before gaining access to their school. And again, having an identity for the entry where you enter the school.
Well, and if I remember the, from the facilities plan, Mayo is one of our oldest buildings.
It is, and there's some, some of the facilities on Mayo are.
Are some of our oldest in the district, sir.
To Leanne's point though, and I don't know the answer, because I'm not from here, but how much significance is it, Audrey, to this community about that Ag, that Ag building that, that you would have to demolish? Do you think we'd get much feedback from it?
Not from the Ag building, I don't think we'd get that much.
That building is, it's, it's in disrepair now. Like, it can barely be used for.
Well, I'm not saying it's not in disrepair. I just know that sometimes people get very familiar about, you know.
It's the name Mayo.
And the location.
For that community. And the location of where it is. They don't, you know, you come in and upgrade and, and, because they're looking at the type of children what is offering for the community. So they want that name there.
Joel, is any part of Mayo on historical register?
Mr. Coolman, we have not looked at that. I don't think so.
You know what it is?
Yes, sir.
Because you can't go in and, you know.
Yeah.
But, but there, y'all, there was a, there was a major, I mean, when Mayo was created, there was a major renovation inside, so.
There was.
I mean, in order for it to become the main school that it.
Wasn't all of that cosmetic?
It was, it was, the thing was renovated at that.
That was more costly.
That was 30 years ago.
That was more costly.
That was 30 years.
If you sold the historical register, that's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I don't.
But if it's not, then it's a new issue.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I have not.
The district would have had to have planned for that. Why would they ever do that to ourselves?
We have to investigate that.
I guess that's the question.
I don't think it would be. I think that Ag building was probably built in the 50s.
Probably was.
The kids, yeah.
Building over this green. Get rid of it. Nation again.
All right. What's next?
All right, so Lamar is our next area, Lamar Spalding Elementary and Spalding Middle School. And so this was, again, just another idea when Joel and Eddie and I were sitting and talking, and it was like, Joel, have you thought about this? And so this is just an idea, again, about what, what we could think about in the Lamar area.
So if we think about Spalding Middle School, and at one time, we, we suggested that maybe it could be on the high school as a wing on the high school property. If we did that, and I'm trying to remember the name, was that the old?
It is a Lamar Elementary.
The Lamar Elementary that was demolished. And so, the old Lamar Elementary that was demolished, that's big enough to put that wing, however, it would also be big enough to put a new high school, a two-story high school on that site, in that one location. So if we end up putting Spalding Middle School on that piece of property, we kind of limit ourselves in the future of how do you, how do you go back in and look at the high school to renovate, demolish, renovate, add on to it? So if we look at Lamar Spalding Elementary School though, we've got quite a good bit of property. And what if we were to look at maybe having a building there that is the new middle school that would give you access, visual access out to Lamar Highway? The gymnasium, some possibilities. Could we use the gym for the elementary school also and make it so that it would kind of be separate, a separate entity that, that, you know, we don't want the middle school students and high school students interacting? We feel like we could accomplish that. The other thing that we could do is look, much like we're doing at Bay Road, look at that cafeteria. And rather than it being cafeteria and P E-type area for the elementary school, make it all cafeteria and then schedule the middle school students so that they would all be seated at one time and would dine and then go back to the classroom. So there's logistical things that we would have to look at if we did this. But this is one option of how we may do that. We would, gonna walk over here again. A few things to consider, one is we're disrupting the parent traffic that's currently coming around here. Bart and I were talking earlier, and we said, well, shoot, maybe, and I'm sorry, I'm standing in your way, maybe we could, you know, have enough loop that we could bring that parent traffic back out and then just have the Spalding Middle School would have their own parking area. Right now, what kind of we're proposing is that this would come around, the Spalding Middle School students would drop off here, and then the elementary school students would come through here. We'll have to develop this interchange where the buses and the, and the parent traffic interact. We've done that before on other school sites where we've put around about it, and that works, it keeps traffic flowing, and it works pretty good. But those are, those are some options, but, you know, having the gym, having the middle school, their own entry that has their own guidance, has their office area, all of those amenities that would be associated with the middle school, that would be right there.
So you're saying moving, yes, sir, Spalding over to Lamar High School?
To Lamar Spalding Elementary.
That's the elementary.
Over to Lamar Spalding Elementary.
Elementary, yes, sir.
On the board of what?
I go back to what I had, I go back to what I said earlier. I think you're gonna shoot yourself in the foot in the community if you do away with Spalding Junior High, Spalding.
The building itself?
If you do away with that facility altogether.
It would still be Spalding.
Still, still, still.
It'll still be Spalding.
You wouldn't be changing the location.
You're gonna be changing the site.
Right, yeah. That would be a selling job, you'd have to.
Yeah, you'd have to really sell that.
Community on that, I promise you.
Now, you remember, that was Spalding High School, that was Spalding Middle School, that was Spalding Elementary School. You were talking about generations of people, taxpayers, who do leave that community, who are gonna have a real issue with doing away with that facility.
So how old is the exist, I don't know Lamar very well, I'm gonna be honest. How old is, do we have, how old is the middle school building? I mean, and what I'm getting at is, how much of an upgrade are we talking about providing to their children? You know, I mean, is there enough of a trade-off there that you're providing, you know, that you could offset some of those feelings by providing them with the?
All that school was built in the 50s and the addition was 2006 or '07. Yeah, 2004, '05.
We did the first bond referendum. We, we did, we did the library and all that, that whole back way.
But that's still over 20 years ago. I mean, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, that's been two, that's been 20 years ago.
Yeah.
That's true. Mad fact was around 2000, probably 2006, I think.
Well, the best thing would be just talk to the leaders of the community and the area, just see what they say and, yeah, we'll.
But the point of doing it like this is so that you could rebuild the high school basically on its current location, right? Because so you would move the middle school so that you could eventually give them a new high school on that same site.
And give the middle school students new facilities. And then if we look at this, the next part of this is, okay, well, how, how could it be further developed? And the answer was, yes, sure, we could have a future addition on the back, future addition outside, Spalding, Lamar Spalding Elementary School, could have an addition there out front. So it opens up for, you know, more expansion. One of the things that we, we looked at, and I do not show it on here, but we also feel that we can slide these drives slightly, and we can get a football field in that area right there for the middle school students to have a play field there in the elementary too, but the middle school students therefore would have that opportunity to have their own field there on the site. That is a competition gym, right? It is, it would be. Probably wouldn't seat Mr. Jeffords, you know, we can talk about it, but right now the size, I think we've got roughly 500 seats in there.
Now, remember, we gave up some seating for the classroom when we did that gym, when we did that gym over.
Doing that Spalding.
Even at, even though at Lamar, when we refurbished, when we refurbished in that bond referendum, we, same time we did Hartsfield High's gym.
That one had a referendum.
Well, when we did Hartsfield High Gym, there may have been a referendum. A part of what Lamar got out of that was that gym being refurbished, and you remember, they cut off a part of it because you got classrooms, they wanted classroom space in there, remember? The gym would have been a little larger. But Rainey said that they had an option. They could get more space gym-wise, or they could cut off a part of it and have those classrooms. And they opted for the classrooms.
Well, yeah, it still seats close to 1,000 people, so it's still.
I mean, it's adequate for what they roll with, yeah.
It's size, size is okay, yeah.
So does the middle school currently have a competition gym and a football field? Or those would be totally new upgrades?
They do.
They do, okay. So that would be just a newer version of those, okay.
All right. Just, just to put it in perspective, the Lamar Spalding site is 50 acres with approximately 500 elementary school students, and Spalding Middle School has around 220.
220, 225 or so.
So you're talking about 700 students on the 50-acre property. Just, just for reference, and we're talking about putting 1,500 on the 50 acres.
Yeah.
But Hartsfield High School, I'm just a two-story building.
Two-story building.
Yeah, but, yeah, just.
Plus, you got stadium and two practice fields.
But I'm just saying.
And all that too.
You, you're, just relatively speaking, I'm just.
And Joel and I also talked about, and keep me honest, what is the, the current trend? Is it a K-8 site versus a middle school site on a high school? And it, it seems to be there are more instances of the K-8 site than there is a middle and a high school together. And it seems to be there are more instances of the K8 site than there is a middle and a high school together.
Correct.
Warren, what's your take on that?
We've got to do a lot of work talking to people in Lamar, I can take that.
From what perspective?
Movement from Spalding.
From movement from the physical site.
Yeah, the site, that's the biggest problem, like Charles said, that would be the part of the biggest obstacle right there.
But would you ever be able to provide?
I would be able to.
Would you ever be able to provide a new building on the existing Spalding Middle site? I'm sorry, I'm ignorant about Lamar, I'm going to admit it.
So, we really have not studied that, but I think the property is sizable. I think there are some drainage issues on the site that...
But then, but here, you could combine, you can do this in a more cost-effective way. We can be better stewards of our money because you're going to have some shared facilities here, correct?
Correct, initially, have some shared facilities and then...
Like cafeteria would be potentially shared, and you already have some of it built out from the drainage and all the things and roads and...
So you said, so the middle school has its own football field, or they use the high school football field? On that same, on the property right there?
Right across the street.
And did we talk about cost here, or just a general sense of, at all, or are we not ready to talk about that?
Well, you know, the raw numbers, we're looking at roughly 36,000 square feet for the gym and the admin guidance classrooms that the middle school would need for the current student population. And roughly $22 million is what that would be, round numbers.
Twenty-two million, that's a good deal.
That's what I was thinking. I was like, we just spent 45 on the new elementary school. So, I mean, that's the trade-offs we make, and that's, unfortunately, it is hard, and I take Charles's comments seriously. It is hard for communities to think about these things, but it's also hard for us to figure out, how do we provide the best facilities for our kids with the money we have? We're not, we are a rural community, and we're very fortunate to have a district that's been good stewards of money for a long time. But I think it's tricky, it's not an easy, these aren't easy decisions, I guess, what I'm saying.
Let me say something. And Joel may be familiar with this, I don't know if he is or not. So in Archburg, the high school that I went to, the high school that Ed, no, not Ed, Ed didn't go there. The old Wilkinson High School property has been condemned. But superintendent realized that if he did not put something back on that property with the name that is presently owned there, it was going to be political suicide for him. So he's demolishing that school, but he's putting a Robert, I mean, a Robert E. Howard Elementary School there. That used to be Wilkinson High School, then it was Robert E. Howard Middle School. Now, but that was the only way he could sell that community on buying into that bond. That's all I'm saying to you. If you take away Spalding, I can assure you, those people are going to have a real fit. Now, we can sit here and play games with it, but I'm telling you, you're talking about, because see, if you're talking about trying to get a bond referendum, right now, you're at 47 million plus. He hasn't even talked about what Hartsburg Highway costs. So even if you get, so even if you get to...
Hundred and fifty-five.
Huh?
Hundred and fifty-five.
So you're talking 150.
Hundred and fifty-five.
So then... So you had, you had 200 million already, 200 million just on those three, you have anything to say, I'm saying?
Joel, for 200, let's just say 300 students, if, what, I'm not holding you to, what would be the cost of a middle school? A pre-standing, not attached?
So, right now, we've got roughly 36,000 square feet, and that gives us our classrooms, our gym, and then admin area. What we're missing on this is the cafeteria.
The core facility.
Core facilities, cafeteria, you know, media, those types of things. So, you know, let's say, let's say we go up to roughly, can we use a round number?
I might hold you to it.
Yeah, 50,000, 50,000 square feet. And what you got, Mark? Yeah, so...
Thirty-five.
More than that.
More than that. Because you've got science rooms, you've got...
You've got site work to do, you're going to have to do infrastructure.
So then you would end up with, yeah, another $10 million roughly. Because that's about what I'm adding up right here, in on-site and off-site cost.
Twenty-seven, thirty.
Should be about $30 million.
Just for, and then site work, there's always site work, right? That's millions.
I've got a number plugged in there for that, which would be on our guard board over here.
Okay, yeah, this is your, this is your crystal ball method. Like, we gave you about 30 seconds, maybe a minute, to go over that calculation, but you guys are professionals, so...
There is a large field, we've been looking at Spalding to the left areas. I don't know if that's enough room for a school or not, and there is.
There's 28 acres on...
28 acres on that.
On Spalding Middle right now.
You got a field on top of that, you know.
I know where you're coming. Steve Water Tower.
Yeah.
So we're saying about 35?
Yeah, I think 35 would be a good number.
Robert Greenson.
Yeah.
Oscar Bill.
All right.
There's one more project.
Oh, boy, it's lost so much time.
So much.
So the next question is, what could St. John's become?
I love this, this is the most exciting one, you say the best for laughs.
Well, look at this.
I'm about to have a go.
Doc Ferguson accused me of going on and doing AI. I said, when we were out there that day, I said, I stood over the fence, and I said, that was the picture I took. And he said, we turned, he said, yeah, with the grass cut, the building looks pretty good. I said, yes, sir. So anyway, so...
Can we not? Can we not talk about that?
This is good.
It's good to be on the line. We just made him move out of?
This is going to be it.
It really is, and I think it...
Well, let's let him talk to us and tell us about it.
You know, it could really serve the district well as a district office. If that's your choosing, you know, you've got the auditorium, there's roughly 4,500 square feet. And we counted the seats, four seats. Just shy of 500 seats, I believe. So, you know, plenty of room for that. We, you know, opportunities to, again, consolidate all of your various departments in that one building. Roughly, roughly 47, 49,000 square feet, just shy of 5,000 square feet total in the building.
And Joel, to that, the, because of the age of the building and the codes, we would never have been able to make this into a building for children. But if we were to make this into a building for adults, the codes are different, and it is something that is doable, is that correct?
Correct. So for an educational building to be type 5 construction, and because it uses wood. And we can't go over two stories on a building like that. However, for a office building, then we can go up to three stories, which is what you have, and the building is sprinkled. So, you know, as far as being safe for the children, children head in there, very comfortable with that, since they went in in the...
Eighteen, eighteen?
Eighty, ninety.
Ninety, in the nineties, in the 1990s, and put a fire sprinkler system in it. So, you know, felt like in your local fire department and all, they've been through here. But anyway, but for a, more of an office building, yes, we went back and did a code analysis. And you have the elevator, and the elevator may not work like it should, but anyway, all of that could be renovated, get an ADA access. This one, I think, almost positive is on the store registry. So we would have to look at that a little bit as we're going to do renovations. What that means is we'd have to just be, make sure that the windows, a lot of other things, you know, if they're replaced, doors. But, you know, walking through, we could easily make that a secure building. We could even get in there earlier, you could use the auditorium, we feel like with some minor renovations, and bring that up to code. We'd have to add some toilets, toilets do not meet ADA. Anyway, the bones of the building, we think, are good. It's been serving the community for a long time. It's another one of those, you know, iconic type buildings that you may want to maintain, hang on to.
One of the visions for that, that I would try to sell y'all on, is, one is starting with the auditorium and making that the boardroom. An auditorium that's available for the district. And so it would be, to add the front to be ADA compliant, you'd add the restrooms on the left when you come in, and make that into the boardroom. So we could do that relatively easily. And then a longer-term project could be to make it, move the district office over that way.
And the idea is this space, because I know in the, in the facilities plan, at some point in the longer term, there was talk about this space being needed for Darlington High.
Right.
At some point.
Right.
You know, so to continue to put money into this space, I mean, I love this idea, I'm not going to lie. I mean, and I'm not Darlington, so I'm not, I'm not, you know, didn't grow up in Darlington, but I love the idea of saving this historic building and making it part of our...
Of ours. Where would the boardroom go?
The auditorium.
So you're going to do a rip into the auditorium?
No, we're going to become the boardroom, so the stage would become the board, tables, dais. We would outfit it so that we're not cranking our necks to try to see the screens, and make it so that the visuals are there. We wouldn't have to move for ceremonies, we would have the space to stay in one place. And then you could fit the chorus room to be like the executive boardroom.
Well, my only thought with that would be, of the person, we don't have an auditorium in this district, other than the one at Hartsburg Middle. I would say if you were to remain, retain that building, that you would keep that auditorium.
We would.
Still use that.
With the seating and everything.
We would need a...
We're pulling out the seating.
The seating stays the same.
If it sits on the stage. This sits on the stage. At St. John's that one time.
Yeah.
That's exactly how it would be, except we would, that's how, that's the setup it would be. And you would be able to take it down.
And you could remove it so that folks from the district could use that for...
If you needed a stage face.
That sounds like, I can, I can live with that. But I go back to what I said, if you do that to St. John's, and you talk about doing away with Spalding, you're really going to shoot yourself in the foot.
Yeah. I just love this.
I mean, I don't have, you know, I'd love to see, see you use that as an office, district office, I agree with you. I just know that when you do that, and then you flip this coin and say, if we're going to tear down Spalding Middle, or do away with it. I can tell you that community is going to say, oh, so y'all keeping that school, but y'all doing away with our history? I miss you.
They'll get over it, yeah.
I had many conversations, you know, I appreciate that, I appreciate that perspective, Charles. I know when Washington Street and West Hartsville, well, we had that whole conversation. And my kids were at Washington Street, and there were a lot of, there was a lot of consternation about Washington Street. But ultimately, we've provided those kids in that district with a much better facility and a better place to go to school. You know, I mean, when my kids weren't Washington Street, they had to move out of classrooms because they were constantly having roof problems. You know, I mean, I just think it's how we, how we have these conversations.
But you maintained it as an educational facility.
Well, we're not saying we...
You didn't do anything, you didn't demolish it.
We haven't said we're going to demolish Spalding Middle, we just said we want to build them a better middle school. I mean, we don't know what the future, the building may be.
What we could also do is, you know, work up some plans on that site, and that would be something for this board to be able to consider.
Consider as an alternative.
We've got room to build a school right there for another $10 million.
Maybe that's...
Maybe that's what we do.
Yeah.
This is all preliminary right now.
Yeah, absolutely, it's the beginning of some conversations.
So back to your figures, what does that young...
Initially, get in there, you know, get the boardroom right, get toilets, so that the building can be used. But I think we're looking at, was it 3 million, 33 and a half million dollars? But ultimately, to go back in and renovate everything, new mechanical systems that would be required for office areas, et cetera. Looking at roughly 16 and a half million.
Sixteen and a half. How's the roof on that building?
The roof, we got, I actually got a million dollars in here for the envelope. And the envelope would include the exterior walls, the roof, and then also possibly your windows too, would look at the window replacement on that.
One thing I've noticed, we've gone over there, I can't even remember what. Well, we have graduation for adult ed. Parking is disconnected from the building. You have something to do with that.
Yeah, now you can get rid of the playground.
You can get rid of the playground.
Yeah. Park it there, even make a park or some sort of...
Okay, I knew there was a disconnect, I wasn't sure what it was.
We've seen...
Okay.
Yeah, we spent about 150 million dollars.
No, 200, I think 200.
200.
Those are all projects, but we've paid for projects, which leads me now to, what do we have capital funds for? That we could knock out any of this just with capital funds?
We have 32 million.
32.7. So, I mean, this is 16 and a half.
And we also remember at Bay Road, so we have the Bay Road, which is around 10.
Okay.
We have potentially St. John's. I think we also, as a part of the Bay Road, need to consider South Side and how to do some upgrades, renovations at South Side once all the children at 5K have moved over to Bay Road. And we could potentially add some playgrounds, do some things to enhance our 4K programming at South Side. And Joel and I are working on what some of those numbers could be for a South Side project for that piece.
Removing those porables, once they're removed and out of there, it kind of opens everything up for, you know, that school to, must have a lot of running. And have, you know, a lot of nice play areas, et cetera, for children.
I mean, how much of that building you were talking about making usable space for the district office?
Once we get in there, we would almost have to touch every floor. However, right now, Ms. Kelly, we, I don't think we'll need all of the space. Typically, what happens when you have space, you fill it up. So, but when I say not all of it, it may be seven or 8,000 square feet that we would not need. But, you know, look, looking at the program we have here, looking at what we got, you know, in other areas, and consolidating everything in that building.
What would you do with the buildings, the cafeteria building?
So this building here, ultimately, this is where we talked about rebuilding, going from high school. And so if you had to take this entire site, there's enough room with a two-story building, then we could do that.
I'm talking about the buildings around St. John's. But all those around the main building, so that's what we...
We talked about potentially the cafeteria building, that would not be needed. We really haven't gone much further out than that. This would take care of the main old building and looking at not needing the cafeteria building. building.
And then maybe, once we are there, right, we can attract some other community agencies or other community groups that may want to, I mean, who knows? Like, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, I mean, I have no idea. To that area.
Maybe want another one of those buildings over there.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you know.
Because we've tried.
The amphitheater is also back there, and that also becomes more usable, perhaps, available if the cafeteria is not there.
Is that theater, is it used, any amphitheater?
It's not currently.
It's the outdoor.
The outdoor.
That is the outdoors, right?
The outdoor one is, yes.
The outdoor.
The outdoor.
It was used, they used it for May Day, and that was the, that was the only current use, at the same time, elementary used it for May Day. I graduated there.
Did?
Uh-huh.
That was a long time ago.
That was a long time. Because that was when you got on the board. That was the same time.
You two were on the board when she was, when she was graduating from elementary school.
Just about.
I, wow, I love this idea. I also don't want to go borrow in trouble, and that is a 200-plus-year-old building. Are we sure that for adult purposes, not for student, and we ruled that out, ergo, while we have Black Creek, are we sure that we're not biting off something that, that we don't want to have to ma, I mean, that's going to be so costly to maintain down the road?
That's a good question. Before we get much further into this, and we've talked about going in and doing some destructive testing, to find out how, you know, how good are the floor joists, how good, how good is everything in the building, to make sure that, you know, we don't end up with, you know.
A lot of money.
A lot of renovation money.
We just don't have the capital.
Absolutely.
Well, and we spent the better part of two years explaining to the public why it couldn't be renovated.
But that was for students.
I know, I understand that, but I mean, there were some very legitimate issues with, I mean, what do you, what do you call the mortar stuff on the outside?
Yep.
Tough, what is it you have to do for bricks on the, I mean, does the mortar was all?
There was something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And that's some.
I mean, the windows were.
Make some restoration.
The, the windows are, you know, not standstill. I mean, there's just, there's a lot that would have to go into.
So, where this idea kind of came from, you're okay with me sharing this, Dorchester Two, down in Somerville, the old Somerville High School, which saw many different lives, it was a Rollins Middle School, it was several things, and then it became, and disprepared, they took that school and turned it into the district office. And it has a lot of the same, this school has a lot of the same bones that we saw there. And we were forced enough to do that project, it turned out outstanding, and it's, it's kind of, kind of what drew some of this idea. So, yes, there are some things, to Joel's point, we would want to do some, some testing and looking, we know there's a couple roof leaks, that's actually on the list that Eddie's taught to us about, kind of doing some surveying and seeing what it is. I don't think it's a major leak, major systematic, it's just in a couple places. So, we, we need to look at that, we need to see what it constructed of, and, and we can do that pretty easily. But I feel fairly confident that what you've got here is in better shape than what we had when we started down there. And it was a 1905 building.
What'd that cost for that renovation?
Oh, goodness.
They've got more money than we got.
No, it was, it was in the 10 to 12 million dollar range.
I mean, that, when I'm looking at, like, 3 million to just get the.
Just to get.
Auditorium ready for us, and to make the front ADA complaint, that just.
But that, and then remove the initial offices over.
Yeah, that was just being, and that's, I'm thinking, like, holy.
But he said 16 and a half.
Yeah, 16, he used it 16 and a half.
And, and that, that number, the 3 million, is, is a, once again, a little better than crystal ball, but not a whole lot better, because it was just a.
It just doesn't seem relative to the 16 million.
And it may not be, until we really get in there and see. We just know that to do what we're talking about, we need a group toilet, and then we need a reception-type area.
And ADA compliance, you said.
And, and the ADA compliance, you have to go around out front.
Yeah, so that's, and that's done.
We can't walk steps, so we have to have a ramp to do what we're willing to do at this point in time.
Bart, did that also, if I remember, that 3 million figure dealt with some air handling too, which would.
Yes.
Benefit the whole building.
Correct.
And, but it's needed if we do the part of the building.
Correct.
Yeah, but we would have to make the decision to go forward, because, I mean, we couldn't justify spending 3 million dollars to get a school ready, just for us to go and have meetings there, and then we keep up the building and don't have the opportunity to sell it. I mean, you know, just for that, I mean.
We would be.
It would have to be like a.
No, I think you have to have a commitment that that's.
If we decided to do that, it would just have to be, that's what we were going to do.
You would have to commit that that's.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, how we phased it in would be a different thing, we would have to make that commitment. But that's why I would want all this testing back, to make sure that we are.
Sure, that's definitely the next step.
Have a money pit.
Any asbestos in there, do y'all know of?
So, so the district, you have an asbestos plant on every one of your buildings, since when you'd ever.
Don't we?
Three to five years, I can't remember. But, but, so anyway, this, this has been tested for asbestos.
We had kids in there that had it.
See, but we had.
Yeah, but you can have it in there, it's not stirred.
You just have it.
They probably built before, they even found asbestos.
More than likely.
That's when they used it, and they were moving it out of all these buildings.
More than likely, it was abated during renovation that you did, I think, in 90.
I think.
To say there's none in there, we would, we would, we would do the testing and make sure of that, for sure, but.
But it always sounds like it's a total internal gutting out, anyway, so I mean, they're going to abate the asbestos and get rid of it. I don't hate it, I'm not crazy about the idea of putting a ramp up there in the front of that building like that, though, we'd have to be very careful with.
We would, we would have to be careful, because again, by this building being on the store register, all of that would have to be designed and included.
I mean, I, I think that, you know, the community would like the fact that it's being restored and used, and the outside still looks the same, you know, the inside's different. But again, it's just kind of a, you know, we'd have to understand and clearly communicate the differences. Well, first of all, we didn't have anywhere to house all those kids while we renovated the school, like, that was the biggest thing. And, I mean, we would just have to spend time explaining, and clearly communicating the differences in a school and an office, and what's required and what's not, and why it's doable now for a district office.
But to Mandy's point, if we did move the district office there, once again, then we have freed up all of this space for a potential New Darlington High School.
And we've talked about renovating that next-door building for millions of dollars in order to consolidate all the offices into one place. We've toyed around with that idea, and instead of putting it here and then having to tear it down later to build, to expand.
Well, right off the bat, on this, this site, we could build another gym, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's true.
So on this site, you can maintain your existence.
Because we could hook it in.
All of your, all of your athletic facilities would all be here, so you would not replicate any of that.
But we could build our second gym, which we've also identified as what we need here.
And didn't you say more practice fields and things?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it would open up space here.
We don't want to do something with the school, we just can't let it sit there.
About what?
We don't need to, we don't need to do something with the school.
We talked about selling it. We've tried to get, we've tried to get outside investors to purchase it and make it into apartment slash, you know, a multi, you know, retail slash residential space, but we just.
Nobody's.
Nobody's fighting.
Nobody's fighting.
How about that do with district office?
And if nobody else is going to restore it, then why not us? We already own it, you know? I mean, if we can't find anybody else that's going to do it, we don't even have anybody fight this.
Nobody's, nobody, we've, we've been trying.
I don't want Josh, I don't want nobody.
Okay, well, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, 200 million dollars.
Well, it's fine.
Wasn't boring, and I didn't get you out an hour. Charles is back today, I guess. I'm just saying.
Charles is back. You're there, I believe. What do you think you go?
He's got to get in with.
He's got to go check in the rehab.
For him, for his wife. He's like, put in rehab.
Check for your rehab.
Okay. For his wife. He's going to check in with his wife at the rehab. We're recording here. All right, here's, let's, Charles, you scoot in, and we're moving on. And we'll catch, we'll catch you up with this part.
Okay.
Joel, Bart, thank y'all so much.
Appreciate it. And we'll be, we'll be in touch with Dr. Ferguson, and, and we'll look at Spaulding side, I think, a little here.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Again.
Did you want to do the picture before Charles left?
Oh, run, catch him.
Joel, we catch Mr. Henry, ask him to come back.
Audrey, can we not, we all in blue jeans.
It's empty.
No, it's empty. Can we, can we just do it at the regular boarding?
Absolutely.
We're all kind of, we're dressed for a work session.
Yeah, we weren't, we didn't realize we had money on camera.
We're dressed for a work session.
Never mind.
Never mind, go home, Charles. Go home, Joel. Tell Carolyn we said hello.
Welcome back. We're all standing around. We were going to take pictures, because we're going back, well, we got to school.
All right, moving on.
We're going to do it.
Uh.
Take a photo. Charles, you want this?
You don't get one, sorry. Oh, you need, you got one more?
As y'all know, every year, I've always asked the superintendent to present his, their goals to us, so that we kind of know where they're approached, and so this is what Dr. Ferguson is now going to present to us.
So, good afternoon, everybody. This was a, a fun exercise today, and one of the things that we talked about around maintenance is going to come in at the end of that. But when Ms. Hassler and I were talking about goals and putting them together, I'm not sure if this has been presented to you like this previously, I don't know. So, this is my attempt data, and it is proposed and for feedback. So, on the first page, what you will see is the excellence in teaching and learning for all, each child every day, and we'll know that we are doing that, and it will be evidenced by a system of excellent schools where at least 75% of students meet grade-level standards, and every student has a clear vision and a pathway to reach their full potential, whether that's in college, career, or military. Under that are the priorities that I've been talking about, and that's student success, teacher support, workforce development, and stewardship. And then some key actions in that are system alignment, high-quality instructional materials, high-quality professional development in safe schools. And so, since that is what I have been saying, I have tried to craft goals around each of those and given baseline data for that. So, the executive summary is that chart on the first page, but if you really want to get into the meat, turn over to page two. So, under student success, what I would like to propose as a goal, and y'all, I'm going to be completely honest and say, many of these are really hard goals. So I am shooting for the moon in some of these, and recognizing that I may not, we may not quite get there, but if we are not striving for hard things, we'll never do hard things. So, the first, under student success, is that by the release of the South Carolina school report cards next year, each one of our schools will increase its overall index score on the South Carolina school report card, and they will maintain or advance their overall school report card rating. So we're shooting for at least five points increase at every single school in the district, and that, in many cases, will move those schools up a report card rating, but in all cases, it will move them closer to a higher report card rating. And we don't yet have the grades for this school year, so what you see on this paper is last year's score. So each school, I gave you the index that those schools earned on the school report cards out of 100, and what their overall rating is currently. The new 25 report cards will come out in October, and I'll update this then, so that we can use that as our baseline and move forward. What I'm also proposing is, how do we get to that five-point increase? How do we move overall ratings? Is, by the release of those report cards, the percentage of students who will be meeting or exceeding grade-level standards in ELA and math will be at least 50%. I would love that to be 75% in, in five years, but we are not currently at 50, and so the goal is that we're going to move each grade level to 50% proficiency in, in pursuit of that, at least 75%. And what you see here, again, we don't have the 25 data to be able to share, is where Darlington County was for 2024. And what you'll see is that particularly at middle school and ELA, we are 10 points at least from meeting that 50% mark. We have one grade level, fifth grade, that met it in ELA. Math, particularly at middle school, on the next page, that data is there. So to meet that goal, I am shooting for at least a doubling what our current proficiency in math is in eighth grade. That's a, a high goal, but I also think that it is one that is attainable when we are focused on academics, we are implementing high-quality instructional materials, and we are supporting teachers in the delivery of math instruction. How do we get there? We've got to make sure that students are meeting their median annual target, and so the smart goal that I have for that is that at least 60% of students will meet their median annual targets on the school report card in 2024, less than 50% of our students did.
What is that, what is a median, I don't know if I've ever heard that term.
So, median annual growth target is, it says, Leanne scored this, Matthew scored B, and it looks and says that children who score like Leanne, this is the typical growth that I should expect to see for Leanne, if she attends school, receives instruction, and moves forward. So it's a year's worth of growth to meet that median annual target. Your growth may be a little bit different than mine, because it depends on where I scored in my pre-test, but it is moving towards every child growing a full year every year in school. So that's the median annual target. So psychometrically, they say, if you scored this in the past, on average, I should expect you to grow this much in a school year.
So it's not actually a grade or a score that is determined in the middle of the year, or no?
We get those MATs, so for all the students who took SE Ready last year in the, in May, we will receive a file that says Leanne's growth target, her MAT is A.
For this next year.
For this next year.
The whole next year.
For the whole next year. Yes, ma'am.
So it's SE Ready and SE Ready?
Yes.
Like, it's from, from one to the next?
Yeah, that's what the MAT is, and that is how the school report cards calculate our growth on the report card. So you get an achievement score, and you get a growth score, the MAT is a component of that growth score. And what you often see is that children should grow first, before you see movement and achievement. You've got to see the growth go up before you see achievement grow up. And this is something that is calculated and publicly available on the school report card, so this is not something that, you know, the school district calculates on its own. When the report cards are released in October, each of us could go on the report card and say, in Darlington County in 2025, what percentage of students met their median annual target? And so what I'm proposing in this is that it's all publicly available data that is calculated by the state, so that it's clear, transparent, and, you know, it's not, you're not depending on the district, you're not depending on me, in that case, to provide you that data, it is publicly available data that is calculated by the state. And that's an ambitious goal.
Because I, because this is the one pushback I always have for this, is that we set that growth goal, and the growth goal is what you should grow in this year, but if you are, if you are a year or two years behind, and you still only grow one year, you are still a year or two years behind.
You're right, and so the other component of growth is the AVT, the added value growth target. The reason I did not choose the added value growth target in this evaluation and chose the MAT is that next year, the state will not calculate an AVT for math, because it's a re-norming year. So you will only consistently have MATs for ELA and math. So that's a very good question, and that's why, when I did this, I chose the MAT to And that's why when I did this, I chose the MAT to propose to you and not the AVT is because the state will not give you next year an AVT for math.
So the MAT for our kids, will it be all of the kids that have taken the test, and then that percent will be established based on that? Or is there a state median that?
Both are calculated. This report is how, what percentage of students in Darlington County met that MAT. Yes, ma'am. But you can compare that to the state's MAT percentage. And I'm going off memory, I think in 2024, a little over 50% of students in South Carolina met their MAT. Darlington County's was 47.4 that year. So we were a little below the state average that year.
So your target is well above the state average?
It's well above what the state average was in 2024. I assume that's going to be pretty consistent this year when that data is released. Next piece is around workforce development. So it is that by the release of the report cards next year, the percentage of students meeting college and career ready will be at least 85%. This year, that's 77.5. Based on some numbers, I really think that 2025 is going to be a little less than that, but that number's not official, and we will have that in October. But I think Darlington County is going to see a slight decline for last year's CCR. So that's 85% is going to be probably about 10 percentage points increase. I don't know that exactly, but that's how I came up with that 85%.
Are they doing something different with that measurement now? Is there a change that they were making on how that is calculated? Or maybe I'm just remembering something wrong?
It changed, I think, in 2020. And in 2020, 2021, the career readiness was based on the graduating class. So it was just calculated on the students who actually graduated. In that 2021, 2020 timeframe, it switched to the kids who were in the graduation cohort. And so that's why comparison prior to 2020 is a little difficult to make.
I thought there was something, maybe it's not this, it's something about there's going to be different ways that they can...
At DCIT...
The stackable credentials.
That one.
So the stackable credentials will go into effect, but it will not go into effect for two or three more years. It's starting now, but it won't show up on the report cards until those children matriculate up and graduate.
Ah, okay.
Next piece, which I know is very near and dear to all of your hearts, is that in this next school year, that the number of students enrolled in the internship course, which is what Ms. Flowers oversees and Ms. Spears now, that will increase. And that each of those students enrolled in the internship course will receive a work-based learning experience. And so one thing that I'm working on right now, kind of in relation to that, is that there are about 16 students more enrolled in the internship course than we have internships for. And so trying to make sure that there is an internship for every single child who signs up for that class. And if we can't get them a paid internship, notice I use the word work-based learning experience because if we can't get them a paid internship, we shouldn't just be sending them home for early dismissal. We should be giving them an experience to shadow in a workplace, work alongside someone, to get experience in the workplace. So that's under workforce development. And then none of this can happen if students do not show up to school. And so there is also a goal around reducing the chronic absenteeism rate. You will notice that in the two years that I have on here, the chronic absenteeism rate has increased in Darlington County. I was very conservative, and honestly, this 3% kind of hurts my heart because it doesn't seem like a high bar. But the reason that it is a conservative measure is because I don't think that our data is currently accurate and that our chronic absenteeism is actually worse than what we currently report. And a reason for that could be, I have a 7th grader. I'm going to pick on my 7th grader. She was sick last week. I get a call at the end of the day that says, "Your 7th grader was absent from two periods today." Well, my 7th grader didn't show up to school the whole day. And so she was absent from two periods, but she was also absent from four others. That happened two days in a row. And so I think we're going to have to also make a concerted effort to make sure that our data is accurate, that we are timely taking attendance consistently every day. And when we push on that, our absenteeism rate's actually going to become worse. So we've got to make it, we've got to get the kids to school, but we're going to see some fluctuation in that when we start pushing on. No, we've got to consistently take attendance.
That's why I love that you're a parent, because I've heard that so many times. Where they're like, "Your child was absent for, you know, this period." And I'm like, "They weren't there all day."
They weren't there all day.
And our teachers didn't take attendance.
They didn't take attendance. The teacher support piece, how do we get there? It is one thing to say that I want 50% of students to be able to read, write, and calculate. It's another to actually make sure that they know how to read, write, and calculate. And so these are more that show up later. What I'm switching to here is more leading indicators. What do we need to change in our practice and our process to get us there? And the first is to fully implement professional learning communities that meet weekly. And we are going to show evidence that at least 85% of those are using data-driven instructional planning and progress monitoring. And we're going to look at that through principal reports and district reports. So that is a more process-driven piece to make sure that we have within our schedules, within our time, that at least weekly, our teachers are meeting in professional learning communities, and that there are structures in place that their time is being used to use the data to inform and drive their instruction.
And that they're not creating their own curriculum.
That gets to the second piece, because that's exactly right. So how do we make... Ma'am?
What kind of accountability?
So what we are currently doing is that Dr. Nichols is working with training our principals and bringing in coaching and support for principals, instructional coaches, assistant principals, to make sure that they know how to run those professional learning communities. What we have also done is say to all principals is that you have to create time in your schedules for teachers to meet. They should not be meeting and doing these professional learning communities after school. It should be during their regular workday. And how we will monitor that is through our instructional coordinators, who are now in schools at least three days a week, through our principals report of that. And so that will be more observational data from both district office, principals, and also teachers, I think, saying, "Yes, we got the time. The time was meaningfully spent, and we use data to drive our instruction." Also, we have to make sure that we are using, to Ms. Kelly's point, our high-quality instructional materials. So what I am proposing is that I be held accountable that we achieve 100% implementation of high-quality instructional materials in K-12 mathematics in the LA, with at least 90% of classroom walkthrough observations demonstrating a teacher's effective use of the materials in daily instruction. And so prior to January last year, it was really a free-for-all for what each teacher was asked to curate his or her own curriculum or to use curriculum that was not vetted by a rigorous process to make sure that it was on grade level. The state has adopted and spent $150 million on ELA materials. The state spent $150, I think it was $175 million on math materials. This board, this district, selected those materials and adopted them for use. And so what we will be doing is to make sure that we are giving them to our teachers, that we are saying that these are high-quality, that we support them in the implementation of those materials, and that the expectation is that we are actually using the materials that we have. And so I think if you walked our schools today, you would not see that all of those materials are being consistently used. Last Monday, Friday, I walked, I don't know, 30 classrooms at three elementary schools in the district. And at one school, in all eight classrooms, I saw them being used. At another school, I saw them being used about half the time. At another school, I didn't see them being used at all, if I'm being honest. And so I think that that is going to require a lot of work to make sure that we are using those materials and that it's showing up in our classroom observations, that they are effectively being used. And if, and until we do that, we will not see instruction improve, and we will not see academic outcomes improve.
Are you worried that the, like, getting the instructional material back on grade level when it hasn't been, that that's going to not impact your, all those results on the first couple pages?
I think that there is no way for us to get there unless we do this.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, having that grade on top of, like, enforcing the grade level instruction, I don't know, are they going to...
Well, what I hope is that you won't fire me if I don't meet those goals. And so I say that quite honestly to say, like, 50%, I don't know that we get that in year one. I think that if we shoot for 35% or a 2% increase, we'll probably get it, but it will never really move us towards 50, 275. And so if I say 50, I might only get 6%, but 6% is going to be better than the safe two or three. The next piece is around stewardship. And so this goes to system and finance alignment. And so by June 2026, we will work to ensure that 100% of our Title I federal, state, and school renewal plans are in direct alignment with the district academic priorities. And so what does that mean? Is that when we read Title I plans sometimes, when we read our school renewal plans, there's a lot of metrics that are in there that are created by the school. They are not always aligned to academic priorities and/or what the district's strategic plan says. And so how we spend money, how the district and school is focused really needs to come into alignment. And so that will be the work of this year, is to make sure that there is alignment between what the district says it's doing, what the school thinks it's supposed to do, and how we are aligning resources and money to achieve that thing, so that we are all rowing in the same direction.
Out of our 1920 schools, how many are not Title I?
Currently, North Hartsfield, Carolina, Hartsfield Middle, Hartsfield High, Mayo are not. And Lamarha does not. It's questionable right now whether or not Southside is. And I really think that Southside technically probably also will not continue to qualify for Title I funds. It's interesting, because I've been reading those plans, what shows up in them. So, you know, schools spend a lot of money sometimes on Title I plans on things that are not aligned to academics and/or not aligned to what the district's focus around how we improve instruction is. You know, so I'm not going to call any names, but you often see sometimes in the literacy space that we may put in a Title I plan that I'm going to hire ABC consultant. Well, ABC consultant may be whole language or balanced literacy when technically, right now, that's not a legal piece because science of reading is what we should be doing around literacy. And so bringing that into alignment so that we are supporting the teaching of reading in a systematic way. Facilities and maintenance. So there's a lot of work that goes on in this district around maintenance plans. And what I have said to Mr. Schuler is that this is not an inherent strength that I brought to the superintendency. I can talk instruction all day long, right? But I know that we need to be data-driven and systematic so that we have a maintenance schedule for every school in the district so that in October, we know that we need to be cleaning gutters. In March, we know that we need to be thinking about painting. And so what I'm asking you to hold me accountable for, and what I'm going to hold Mr. Schuler accountable for, is that we have a routine maintenance schedule for every school in the district and that we are working towards completion of that maintenance schedule. And that our plans are working in alignment with our long-term vision. So if we are planning to build a new school, then we are putting, you know, our resources towards working towards that, not just, you know, "This project's on fire until we're going to spend some money on that." Human resources. So Mr. Miller gave me some data before we came in here, and I didn't update it. I may need to up this goal. We are currently at about 88% of teachers who are highly qualified and hold appropriate certification. So I'd like to up that to we will be at 95% next year. So we, Mr. Miller, I am blanking on those numbers, but I think we have about 644 teachers.
In the classroom, 74 of those.
And 74 are currently not certified. And so that's a number I would love to one day get to zero. But to put an emphasis on having a highly qualified, certified teacher in every single classroom, we're currently at 88%. So let's work to be at 95% next year and increase our focus on that. And then last, but certainly not least, I have heard y'all say that you would really like us to tell our story and market ourself. And so I've been talking with Audrey about how we increase our district-wide marketing and community engagement. And how we will measure that is that we will launch at least one communication or marketing campaign each quarter that highlights either student success, teacher-staff excellence, or community partnership. I went back and forth, if I'm being honest with y'all today, about is one a quarter enough? We were at one a month. And then Audrey corrected me and said, "You know, that a campaign is not like a video." And so there's a lot of pieces that go into a campaign. And so that is kind of how we settled and talked about, you know, one per quarter. But that campaign will have multiple communication vehicles to make sure that we are recruiting students from out of district, transferring. We are recruiting staff to come to the district. We are telling our story around success. We are educating folks on the excellence in teaching and learning that happens every day in Darlington County schools. So that was a lot that I just threw at you. I'd love your feedback, but that's kind of what I've been thinking about. One, what moves us closer to excellence in teaching and learning for all. But also how you can hold me and us accountable for that, because what we've also talked about is, once you have decided and said these are good goals, how do we make sure that our principals have these same or similar goals in their principal evaluations? How do our district office staff have in their GBEs the goals within this that relate to their area so that, again, we are all working towards one team, one dream, each child, every day?
Questions?
Your passion is refreshing.
And I'd like to add that I think you can do it.
We're going to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe not in one year.
Maybe not in one year.
But I appreciate the idea of, you know, setting high goals and...
I too greatly appreciate, I mean, as you said, we could make 2%. But where are we getting with 2%? I mean, we are just...
Stay where we are.
Yeah, we're staying where we are.
We're holding... And this, I 100% believe this district has the ability to exceed our demographics. So just, I mean, we are a school district that is 80%, has an 80% poverty rate, 80-plus percent poverty rate. We have the ability. We have the people in place that are capable of moving our children. And I think this is a comprehensive plan to begin that process.
I mean, I'm looking forward to the day that poverty rate and student success does not go hand in hand.
Correct.
So am I. It's measurable and it's attainable.
We used to say poverty is not an excuse.
That's right.
It is not.
It's not. It is a...
An obstacle and not an excuse.
Correct.
Poverty is difficult, it is not destiny.
That's right.
You said it's obstacle.
Can be, but it's overkillable, too.
All right. If we have no more comments on that, I think we have an executive session. It sounds like we don't.
Oh, shit.
Are you sure? I mean, we can have it if you need to.
We didn't...
We don't have any material to cover. If he needs to talk to us.
Oh, good for that. If there are, if there's no more comments, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Even on the nights when we get to a great meeting, we'll go into a...